We are live.
Countdown.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Council President Pridges.
Aki.
Majority Leader Rivera. Council President Pridges.
Aki.
President Protem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Here.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Former Miss President.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our chaplain, the Reverend Al Warner.
I'm not saying anything to any of you that would be new, but this was the strangest holy week ever. I think we would all agree, not just for our city, but for cities around the world, to see Rome and the square in Vatican Square empty and so many others. But even with churches unable to be used in traditional sense, God is with us in days whether the church can gather as traditional or not. We continue to be thankful for the recovery of all four Prigons and others that are recovering at this point. This hit close to Deb and me on Saturday when Debbie's brother in Chicago was diagnosed with coronavirus and pneumonia as well. So he is currently in isolation. And some of you recognize that means even if we drove out, we couldn't be with him during this time. So these are situations that I'm sure every week more of us are up close and personal with people that are affected by this. I thought today of the story in Mark, chapter four, of Jesus asleep in a boat during a storm. And his reaction so different than that of the disciples. He invited them to come with him to the other side. First thirty-six, when they'd left the multitude, they took him along in the boat as he was. And other little boats were also with him, and a great windstorm arose, and the waves beat into the boat so that it was already filling. But he was in the stern asleep on a pillow, and they awoke him and said to him, "Teacher, do you not care that we're perishing?" Then he arose and rebuked the wind and said to the sea, "Peace, be still." And the wind ceased, and there was a great calm. Just for a moment, I see in this scripture that storms and Jesus are not incompatible. For many of us, we're in the storm of the century, last pandemic, a hundred and two years ago. And now the storm we're in. But for many of us, I want you to know that Jesus is more than ready to be invited in to speak peace over our storm. The storms in our council districts, the storms in our personal lives, our families, our neighbors and neighborhoods. And I want to believe that today God can speak peace over the storms that's in our hospitals, our nursing homes, and especially in some of the zip codes of the city of Buffalo that some of you are common council members for. So we especially want to pray for those in the storms that are in those neighborhoods together today. So let's pray. Father, you know everything that we're experiencing today. You know that the disciples were in a storm like they, many of them professional fishermen, had never seen before. But during that storm, you were not caught up in the storm. The storm wasn't in you. It was in them, but it was around you. And you then took authority over the storm. I ask that you do the same thing for those of us who are feeling the storm, those people and precious citizens of Buffalo in each of our council districts. I pray, Lord, that even now you'd speak peace into their lives, peace into their families, peace into their health, peace over their storm. We pray for those that are healthcare workers and ask even now for protection for everyone who is serving, even at risk of their lives. Thank you, Father, for those that are in the compassion and helping ministries and are serving all over our city. Bless them, even now with strength and with courage. Lord, I pray for the researchers, those that are looking and searching for an answer for this. I pray divine insight and wisdom as they do it. For those in government, not just on the council, but throughout the state and the nation. Lord, I pray for calm, reassuring voices and wisdom on the journey. For those that are working on the economic aspects of this, Lord, the timing that needs to come. And for every person with a sick relative or a friend, Lord, even now, would you say over all of our storms, "Peace, be still." And we ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, any memorials? Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, thank you. I want to ask the city of Buffalo to pray for the family of Justine Smith. She passed away earlier this week. And she was a member of the Ephesus Ministries under the pastor of Reverend Jeff Carter. Justine Smith and I had shared the same birthday. I met her over twenty-six years ago. And I met her when I was fourteen. My first job was at Madai College. And she was a librarian. And she was one of the first people who kind of took me under their wings, along with her, my supervisor, Joe Durrmeyer. And every single year, I would get a phone call or a text message or a Facebook post from her, since Facebook allowed us all to be a part of this network, wishing me happy birthday. So Jesse, Justine's going to be sorely missed, I'm sure, by her family and her friends and her church family especially, because I know she was a pillar and a stalwart in that body of believers. So I'm just asking that the city of Buffalo keep Justine Smith in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other councilmembers that I might not be able to see? Who have memorials?
Councilmember Bowman, I have.
Member Bowman?
Yes. As Reverend Warner said, this is starting to hit close to home in the Lovejoy District. We lost two friends of the district. Denise Griner was sixty-six years old. She passed on April eighth. And she was a lifelong Lovejoy resident on Goldie Street and well-known to many in the neighborhood. So my condolences to family and friends. We also lost John Tarantino Senior, known to many as Mr. Tarantino of Tarantino Foods Produce Distribution Center. He ran over at Clinton and Bailey. Mr. Tarantino was ninety-nine years old. He was active in his business up until his last days. And he built a great family business that employed many Lovejoy residents and many residents of the city of Buffalo. He was one of my first employers. I drove a delivery truck for them. And Mr. Tarantino would always take his new hires out on a delivery run and kind of fill you out. I was lucky enough to be one of those who rode with Mr. Tarantino as Buick. He had great stories to tell. He was proud of the business he built, and he will be sorely missed. So my condolences to his family as well. Thank you, council president.
Thank you. And I remember Tarantino's when we had the subway, that's who supplied us our food, our local food. So thank you. Any others? Again, I may not be able to see you. If you just raise your hand, but if you just say in. All right. Hearing no others, I do have a list here. Ramona Avilas. Reverend Samuel Rivera, who was very active on the West Side and really all over and embraced everybody. And so he will be missed. John Tarantino, who was just mentioned, and Denise Griner, who was mentioned, I believe. Hearing no others. We always remember our veterans who have given, or our active duty, who have given their lives since our last meeting. But during this outbreak, and you all have already said it, we remember those frontline workers who are working so hard to keep us alive. We pause in this council meeting for a moment of silence. Thank you. As a part of the council's overall plan for the operation, the transparency, we are, of course, live on our, on Facebook. We are, of course, live on Zoom, and this will be replayed also. The Buffalo Common Council will have closed caption video and transcription of the caucus meeting created and ready for the public and be put out to the public. This follows the governor's executive order in regards to meetings held via telecommunicated methods. Our staff, after the transcript has been completed, it will be posted on the city's website. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on March thirty-first, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to the late files? Hearing no objections to the late files, we will hear the entire agenda that is before us, not taking away your right to pause the meeting if you need to review an item. We would, I would again ask, because I cannot see everyone at one time when we're on this, on what I am looking, the device I'm looking on. So if you need to get my attention, please just state your name and unmute. I believe we're ready to go from the top.
Item number one, a mid-annual action plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
You had a floor.
Member Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridges.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera. President Protem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Just a reminder, and thank you, Tiana, for reminding us, this is only our second time that in approval or denial, we will have to do a roll call vote. Next item.
Item number two, submission of monthly report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by President Protem Scanlon.
Item number three, Northland sidewalk improvements.
Motion to approve.
Do you want to approve the whole list, the three, four, and five?
If we can do them individually.
You can, no, you could do them all in a group, and we roll call.
Not a problem. Motion to approve items three, four, five, and six. It's seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
And twelve?
Twelve.
And twelve. All right. Second by councilmember Wyatt. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridge.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Next item.
Item number thirteen, food store license, twenty-two oh-two Seneca.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridge.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, traffic violations agency annual report, twenty-nineteen.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Item number fifteen, liquor license notice.
Motion to receive and file items fifteen and sixteen.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item number seventeen, appoint hub program manager.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number eighteen, notice of appointment.
Motion to adopt.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number nineteen, meeting transcript.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number twenty, city financial status reports.
Motion to send to finance.
Motion to send to finance, second by councilmember Noakowski, who was asked to also be included on this resolution.
Chairman, I'd like to also be included on that resolution as well.
Please note to include the majority leader on this resolution as well.
Councilmember Bowman as well, please.
Please include councilmember Bowman on this resolution as well. Next item.
Item number twenty-one, policy to revoke licenses for price gouging.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And just for the record, for those who may be watching, this is a, we are about to vote in a roll call vote on a resolution that would have any store who is licensed by the city of Buffalo, that their license could be revoked pending an investigation if they raised their prices more than twenty percent during this crisis. And on essential items, it would exclude gas stations. And I'm not talking about the stores and the gas stations, but the gas itself is excluded because of other things that go into play when setting the price for gas. All others, for instance, what we've seen, it's been reported to us that there is a store that is selling butter, one stick, not the entire four sticks, one stick for four dollars. And this was not the price always. And so we move forward this for a roll call vote, if no one else has anything to say. Roll. Yes?
Chairman, I like. This is councilmember Rivera.
Oh, go ahead, councilmember.
Councilman, Mr. President, thank you very much for your resolution. I'm hopeful that the state and the county would do the same thing. We have seen a spike in prices of various items, especially things that are essential. Sometimes you can't find them on the shelf, and if you do find them on the shelf, the prices have gone up. And it's unfortunate that we use, that this time is taken advantage of to drive the prices up at a time where we should be helping people. So I'm glad you sponsored this. I hope that the county and the governor looks at this as well.
Councilmember Rivera, state Senator Kennedy called me, who asked to send this to the Attorney General. And the state Attorney General, according to Corporation Counsel, who is on right now, and she did send it to me, does have a complaint line for price gouging. At the end of the day, I think that if we have stores that are located in the city of Buffalo, and they have a license, we should be reviewing that license. And if it is really out of line, those stores should be suspended from having business until they have a hearing. Because, totally right, this is not the time to price gouge. But we do also have the state Attorney General, who is on board and has a hotline. Councilmember Wyatt, I believe you were next.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, because someone posted on my Facebook page, a gallon of bleach for six dollars and some change, which is a deep price gouge. So I've asked people to report it to us. However, are we asking them to call the hotline, or we're asking them to let us know that we report it to inspections and permit?
You know, I think both. I don't think it takes away from doing both, to call their council member and also to call the state Attorney General. I think that we should be going after, if anybody's doing anything unscrupulous in these times, and especially in poor neighborhoods that are already struggling, where there's a lot of layoff, call everybody. Call in the national guard if you need to, because at the end of the day, it's wrong. It's wrong.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto. Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
One hundred percent yes.
Council President Pridge.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
A hundred and fifty percent yes.
Clerk, would, this one has to go to the mayor for signature?
Yes.
All right, then what I'm going to request is that immediately be sent to the mayor for him to decide whether he will sign or not, so that this can go forward as quickly as possible, because we can't wait until July to deal with price gouging.
Received. We will have it down tomorrow.
Next item.
Item number twenty-two, policy to revoke licenses for prohibiting PPE in workplaces.
Motion to receive and file items twenty-two and twenty-three.
And again, thank you, councilmember. Motion received and filed, second by councilmember Bowman. Thank you for your support on this. As you know, not only did the county react, and they have now allowed, they are now allowing people to wear PPEs when they're at their work. But also, after we sent the letter to the governor, early last week, we did get a response from one of his aides that he was considering it. And on Sunday, the governor of the state of New York also supported this and made it statewide. So I don't just say it was probably us. I'm sure it was others. But we were first, one of the first in line to ask that this be, that this happened. So that's why it's being received and filed today and not acted on. But thank you very much for your support. Councilmember Wingo?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to kind of dovetail off of what you mentioned earlier. I remember having this conversation in caucus regarding the PPE gear for the employees. And I had shared with you that my son works for a very reputable company here in the city of Buffalo, one that is very well-known for treating their employees very well. And I was pleased when my son got the job, but when he came home, even as an essential worker, and informed us that he was discouraged from wearing PPE, I was a little concerned. So let me just say that I want to thank all of my colleagues, you particularly, for your leadership, and all of my colleagues for ensuring that we express and convey the importance of having PPE gear for all of those essential workers out here in the workforce. And also, just to go back on the price gouging piece, which I believe is all kind of relative to this pandemic, absolutely relative. The price gouging is horrendous, and it's happening in more than just our large retail stores or our corner stores. We're talking about thirty dollars for hand sanitizer. We're talking eight dollars for the N5 face masks when they were only selling this time last year for pennies on the dollar. So all of these efforts, when folks ask, "What's the council doing?", we're doing what the council does, which is legislate. And we try to put policies in place that would positively impact the lives of the people, that would also reflect their wishes and their concerns as they are being conveyed and relayed to us. So again, those resolutions are crucial. And I'm sure that these won't be the last two resolutions or pieces of legislation that we pass to ensure that we are protecting the people from folks who might try to take advantage monetarily off of this pandemic. I don't know how they can sleep at night, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that folks aren't taking advantage of other folks' pain. You know, we're all going through this together, and I will just continue to ask all of our colleagues to continue to work together as we do what legislators do during a pandemic. Thank you for the time.
And thank you, Councilmember Wingo, because after we drafted and I talked to my colleagues, none of this can happen with one of us. It's all of us. And when you called me and let me know about that business, that business was not aware that as it broke down, the heads of the business were saying, "You could wear it." Once it got down to the people level and supervisor levels, they were saying, and the company didn't even know, "We discourage it." Well, when you, if you tell an employee, especially a young employee, "We discourage it", it's like basically saying, "Don't do it." And so that's why we needed legislation, and you're totally correct, legislation to happen. So thank you also for your input that helped drive that. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Council President. And I just want to mention there's something that's kind of similar, but not really. I have a business in my district that sells hair that got an exemption from the state. How they got an exemption, I have no idea. But I've sent a letter to the Attorney General, because they're giving hair, selling hair at the back, through the back door and causing traffic jams. So there may be situations that people have gotten exemptions. I have no idea how this particular company, this particular business was exempted, but we're asking them to look into it. I've also contacted Erie County, asking them if they could at least look into the situation, because they are not practicing social distancing. So if people are watching and paying attention, the store is on Bailey Avenue. Many people have complained to me about it, so I just want them to know that we're not sleeping on it. They do have an exemption. However, we're investigating it, and I'm hopeful that it'll be shut down. Thank you.
So the, Councilmember Wyatt, they're selling, so they do have an exemption, but they're selling it through the back door, you're saying?
Well, they're actually, that's what someone phrased it on Facebook, but they're actually selling it. They're not letting people inside the building, but they're doing curbside sales, which is causing problem on the.
Got it.
Jason streets, because the traffic is backing up. They're selling hair and supposed hand sanitizer and possibly face mask. I didn't see those things. I did see them selling hair.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Any others? All right. Next, I'm sorry, who is that?
Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilman Scanlon, you're on.
Yeah, if we could all revisit item number twenty-three.
Motion to revisit item number twenty-three, second by councilmember Wyatt, this before us.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not sure why this item was marked for receive and file as one of the sponsors of the legislation. No one brought it to my attention that it was going to be received and filed. One of my staff members caught it yesterday after caucus. I actually didn't catch it during caucus. But I would ask that we actually adopt this resolution that Councilmember Farrelletto and I filed. I'm aware that the governor added golf and the use of golf courses to a list of restricted uses. But yesterday, he was also at a press conference discussing a policy and plan for slowly reopening and things of that nature. So I think in order to give the Olmstead Conservancy every tool they need to be as successful as possible, once we do start to reopen slowly but surely, I would ask that this be passed. And also, in addition to that, moving forward, anyone that's taking place in just more of a point of order, kind of point of process, anyone that's taking place, and anyone that's taking part in the pre-caucus, with the majority leader's staff, Corporation Counsel, et cetera, let's not go ahead and receive and file any items. I know it's happened in the past with other council members, but let's not go ahead and move on any items, especially when it's going to be a receiving file until any of the, until all and any of the sponsors have been notified or it's been discussed with them.
Absolutely. And Councilmember Scanlon, because the public is watching, can you just give a brief summary of what? So you're asking for it not to be received and filed, but for it to be adopted? Can you just give a brief summary so that the public will understand?
Yeah, it just very briefly, kind of the ten-thousand-foot view of it, is just going to bring all of Olmstead's charges for the golf courses in line, whether it's resident, non-resident, things like that, all going to be the same price, so they can operate more quickly. Obviously, a difference, not a strain on certain people, but again, bring everything one, one level, and they can operate a little more easily. And it's only for thirty days at a time, and they have to come back and.
Got it. So that's, this is for thirty days. And we know that the golf courses were open when this was written, and it could open next week. But I, and I will say this publicly, because I was disappointed that certain sports are closed, other sports stayed open, so you couldn't go to the basketball court, but you could go to the tennis court, and you could go to the golf. And if it was about social distancing, somebody should have went over to the basketball court and said, "Social distance", or close it off. So I was very glad when it was finally all closed, because in this pandemic, I think what we have to be careful of is not cherry picking and saying, "You can't do something, but you over here can." So thank you for the resolution to both of you. The motion then is to rescind the receive and file, correct? Second by councilmember Farrelletto. And now the motion before us is to adopt, is that correct? The motion is to adopt, second by councilmember Scanlon. Roll call, actually. I gotta do a roll call.
It's an adopt.
So we're okay?
Only approvals and denials is the roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Next item. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wyatt?
Council President, can we go back to the, what is it, item number twenty-two? Because I got a different, regarding the price gouging, is that something that we can adopt?
No, we're making a policy.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Councilmembers, we're going to move forward if there's nothing else. Next item.
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Regular committees. Committee on Civil Service is Tuesday, April twenty-first, 2020, at nine forty-five a.m. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 9:45 a.m. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service, is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 10 a.m. Committee on Legislation is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 1 p.m.
The Committee for Civil Service, the chairman is on, he said he didn't have any items, so we don't have to do the committee, Civil Service.
Okay, I will correct that.
And for those who are watching, the Committee for Legislation and all of the committees, we will only be dealing with pertinent issues that we must deal with. And for those in the Eloquent District, at the Legislation Committee, 115 to 117 Glenwood will be discussed, as they are requesting a license to operate a lodging house, which will have, which in turn will be a halfway house as the governor, as the federal government is asking that business to quickly open so that they can move some people out of jail during this COVID-19, out of custody during COVID-19 pandemic. I, I am, I'm raising it at the, at the committee, because during this time, I don't want any neighbor, regardless of what district you are in, to feel that the common council made a decision without your input. I believe we have our, the head of council staff, and I'm going to ask him to tell people how they can weigh in on any issue that is coming before the common council. Either Tiana or Malcolm, will you please tell people how to do that?
If anybody has an interest to comment on this item or anything else in the future that is COVID-related important, to get your voice heard, you can send us mail in the post, the normal address, the city clerk. You can email us to councilstaff@city-buffalo.com. We will also put that link in the comment section of this Facebook video. And you can also call in to the Central Staff Office, which is 716-851-5105. Again, and that's preferred that if you could do that by email or calling in, we'll take that by councilstaff@city-buffalo.com or calling to 851-5105.
Let me clarify, because in your, your statement, you said they could contact us about anything related to COVID. I want to be clear, this is about what is on our agenda that will be coming up for the common council. Those things related to COVID, they can contact their district council member at any time. So what I'm asking is those who are watching, for instance, the 115 to 117 Glenwood, and you want to weigh in, you can weigh in with your comments, you can weigh in with your opposition, or you can weigh in with your approval, or anything else that will be part of the city record, and that will be considered by council members. Same thing with the Finance Committee, which part of this meeting today asked for a full reporting of the finances of the city for that discussion on next Tuesday. So please utilize that. And as Councilmember Wingo asked, and other people asked people to join us by Facebook, the comments have been rather interesting, of people appreciating this common council and its transparency, and one person even saying online, they wish we could do it like this all the time. Well, we'll be back in session soon, but we always have our meetings livestreamed, and we always have our meetings live on public access. So I think we can do probably a better job in letting people know that, because people are really watching, and I think that they want to know what their government is doing. And this common council, to all eight of you, are doing a wonderful job in keeping their offices, although their physical offices not open, every single council member can be contacted, their offices can be contacted. Even though they might not be in City Hall, they're checking their email, and every council member is still working. So I want that to be very open to the public. Every council member is still working. I didn't realize we were at the end of the agenda, Tiana, any announcements for your history?
Not an announcement, but I really want to just kind of reiterate and go back on what you said before regarding the, the house over on Glenwood. And what I want to make sure that all of the, because that's really close to the border in the Maston District.
Yes.
I want the folks in Maston District who are concerned about that to even call our office as well. Call the number that Malcolm provided, and then also call our office, 851-5145, to also submit your comments and suggestions as well, or concerns, comments, concerns, and suggestions. Because it's a little confusion, some, some of the borders, because one half of the street is in Maston, the other half is in Eloquent, one half of the street is in Maston, the other in University, one Maston, the other in Fillmore, one half in Maston, the other in Delaware, and so on and so forth. So Maston is the only district that actually touches five other districts. And with that being said, we want everyone who's concerned about that transitional home to call us as well, so that we can make sure that your voices are heard as a part of the conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There might be some in support, and Councilmember Wingo, there's going to be a lit drop this week. So if you want to make sure that Maston gets it, we're asking council staff, our Eloquent staff, and if you want to send some Maston out when you, you know, if you don't have time, we'll get that out, so that nobody in the neighborhood feels that we did not allow them to either speak up on it, speak for it, or against it.
Right. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other business council members?
I, I do, Mr. President. I just want to take a few moments to recognize few folks that are in the Fillmore District who have really provided food availability and security in my district. Pastor Giles from Back to Basics, who is serving and helping the Genesee Moselle neighborhood. Mrs. Triggs, who tried to help and make sure everyone can have a little bit of Easter, you know, joy. And the Old First Ward Community Center, who is trying to stay open and serve when they can. And also the Responsive Love Center and Sister Janice, who has been taking food bags and dropping them off to seniors' bags, so there's no interaction. Once, you know, usually once or twice a week, I do it. I did it today, this morning. And as I pulled up, I just saw a lot of folks walk down Rother, coming out of their houses and taking advantage of these services to make sure that everyone is having food security.
That's really very, very kind. I do also want to acknowledge, now that you've said that very quickly, the University District, Councilmember Wyatt, and Eight Days of Hope, who gave out masks, free masks. Matter of fact, people called me and said, when is, when is Eloquent going to do it? And I had to explain to them that it was Eight Days of Hope who was able to secure those masks. But it is tremendous. Also, and this is from the Willoughby in Maston District, Councilmember Wingo, you might not even notice, I just got a call.
Yeah, Craig Willoughby.
Owner, did he tell you? So he has some, he is partnering with Asteria for frozen food. And we will have about 100 of those at our food pantry. And he was reaching out to Councilmember Wingo, and urging other churches. He's, he's willing to buy 300 meals frozen, so there are people doing like outstanding things across this city that I think it is so wonderful for us to acknowledge. So thank you, Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah, and.
Then Wyatt?
Okay, so with, with that too, thank you, Mr. Chair. With that too, I was going to mention Eight Days of Hope and how they were giving out free masks right on the edge of Maston and University District. Steve Library and everyone was out there doing a great job handing those out. Councilmember Wyatt was geared up, gloves and mask, and handing out the materials, the PPE to the folks. But also, I want to acknowledge, since we're acknowledging folks for the great work they've been doing, Murray Holman, he's been out almost every other day, almost every day, I'm pretty sure, making sure that people have food. I mean, the street was lined up with food for the, for the folks who are in need right now, as well as Lenny Lane and George Johnson. These people are out almost every single day trying to make sure that people are being provided for those folks who are in need. And then again, too, the churches who are still working their food pantry. We acknowledge all of those churches who are still giving out food during the food pantry. Remember, you can always call 211 to get vital information regarding where you could find the next, the closest food pantry to you. So please utilize 211, call our council staff office for information. And also, 311 is still working, all right? 311 is still working. We also want to make sure that people know that bulk trash has been postponed, so do not set out any large trash items for the lifters. Bulk trash has been postponed, so please do not put your trash out, because it will be there for a while, and you don't want to get a ticket, because it's out there. Last but not least, the mayor sent out the flyers for the doors. If you're in need of a, a good neighbor, if you really, really are in need of a helping hand and a good neighbor, the mayor has these door tags that he's given out to all of the residents of the City of Buffalo to assure that if you need help, just hang this on your door. And a police officer or an EMT, as they're driving by, they will come knock on your door and see what's, and see what it is that you need. We have one hanging on our door. We don't need anything. I thank God that we're, that we're okay right now. But on our door, we have it hanging there just to let everyone know that we're in support of this initiative, and we're all standing in solidarity as one city, the good city, the city of good neighbors, to ensure that everyone is being staffed and taken care of during this pandemic. So please, we're just continuing to just lift everyone up in prayer as we are, are lift, move throughout this thing together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give thanks again to Steve Tyber, Eight Days of Hope. He gave over 700 masks out. I didn't expect that it would be as many people, but we're grateful that he was looking out for the neighborhood. He saw the story regarding the infection rate in 14215, and he mobilized and take care of the needs, so I thank him. He's also looking to assist in partnering with churches to give away bags of food to seniors. So he's going to let me know what his plan is by the end of the week, and then I will provide that, because we do know that there are seniors, seniors who won't leave out of their homes because of concerns for transportation, but he wants to partner with churches to make sure that those families or those seniors get bags of food, and they don't have to be worried about being infected. So I will get more information, but I want to give big ups to Steve Tyber and Eight Days of Hope. Also, this is a side note, something happened in my district where there was a lieutenant that was shot at. Darren Exum, I can say his name, the lieutenant was shot at, but I wanted to praise him, because he saw something in his neighborhood, and he was off duty. And he saw these young people, some one person running out of a yard, so he just was watching and doing his job as a police officer, and he followed them. This young person happened to shoot at him. And so I thank him, because these young people were doing something in our neighborhood, and as an officer off duty, sometimes you may not pay attention, but he was. So I just want to give a big ups to Darren for doing, going beyond the call of duty and protecting the neighbors and his neighborhood, and doing his job. Thank him.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Earlier on, we talked about people that were taking advantage of people, and now we're giving credit to the people that are helping. One person I want to recognize is Eric Jones from the Dream Center, who called me up two weeks ago and said, you know, we have food, and we'd like to distribute it to people that are needy. And I asked, well, where do you get the, the money, or where do you get the food from? And he says, well, we get it from foundations, and we get it for people like Pegulas. And sometimes we don't recognize where it comes from. There are many philanthropic groups and individuals out there that are doing exactly that. They're providing these organizations and agencies with food, with dollars, so they can help the most vulnerable in our community. I also want to thank the, the people that are giving to the first responders. You go to Buffalo General and ECMC and those places, restaurants are actually sending food to the first responders as well. I want to thank the first responders, the people that are on the front line, dealing with a lot of this, and certainly those people that are delivering food to our seniors, who are home, who are at home and can't get out. So I want to thank all those organizations, individuals that are helping the first responders, our seniors, our law enforcement, you name it. So we take it a moment just to thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, everybody. All right. Majority Leader?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Farrelittle. Thank you, we are adjourned.